Two are coming. Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the May 12, 2022 work session of the MARTA Board of Directors. And again, you don't have to sign in, the system does it for you. May I have a motion for the approval of the April 14, 2022 work session minutes?
I move approval. Oh, sorry. You did?
Keep him in order, Ms. Hardidge. Let us vote.
I am an old dog, you know.
We see you with your new jacket today, so we talked about that this morning. Little fun in our meeting. The motion has passed. The minutes of the April 14, 2022 work session are approved. Under our chair's report, or the chair's report, there are a couple things that I would like to make sure to acknowledge. For instance, the celebration of the Writers Advisory Council inaugural event, which took place here at the MARTA headquarters on last Wednesday. It was so very, not interesting, but awarding to see how our, the members of the MARTA Writers Advisory was excited to be acknowledged for their contribution and their support. I want to take the time to thank Rhonda and her team for all that they did to make everyone welcome, for acknowledging those that participated. And I can tell you that our Writers Advisory Council felt very appreciated. They felt as if though their suggestions were taken into consideration. I believe we have certain things that will be taking place, and I'm sure that she will update us as to how their suggestions have moved to improve our relationship with our community. Also, we participated in the Writers Advisory, I'm sorry, DeKalb County. I have it on one order on one sheet and another order on the other, DeKalb State of the County, in which MARTA received recognition from the CEO of DeKalb County. It was very interesting. I want to thank Ms. Mullenax, who I know the CEO called on her at the very last minute to ask that we have a couple of MARTA buses there at the location that had been used for COVID-19. And he was very thankful, DeKalb County was thankful, and it was very acknowledging to know that they appreciated the support of MARTA during this time. He acknowledged, of course, our interim CEO and GM and the board of directors that was there, as well as our, as our C team. So, want to really say thank to, thank you to the CEO of DeKalb for making sure that MARTA was acknowledged. Lastly, I'd like to also, do we have today is, this week is called, during the month of May, it's National Police Awareness Week. And I just want to take the time to have us acknowledge our MARTA police. Let's give them a hand. With National Police Week, what happens is that police actually convene in Washington, DC to acknowledge those that have been fallen and to ask for bills and legislation that would support them. And I could not think in regards to National Police Week without also honoring our MARTA police. Lastly, I want to say congratulations to our own, she had to leave for another meeting. But on yesterday, at the ARC T Quack meeting, we were, they acknowledge women, that's part of the ARC, that are, were listed in the 100 Influential Women in Engineering. And they are members of their board. But what I want to acknowledge is that we have a member of our board who has left for the day, but was here earlier in a committee meeting, and that is Ms. Stacey Blakely. She is featured in 100 Influential Women in Engineering Georgia.com. So, let's give her a round of applause. She had to leave, but I told her I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that she also was featured in that magazine. So, thank you. And with that, I turn it over to our interim CEO and GM, Mr. Colley Greenwood.
Thank you Chair Scott, and good afternoon, everyone. I really just wanted to spend some time in updating everyone on the most recent LINK annual regional collaboration program. So MARTA, of course, participated in that program. It was from Wednesday, May 4 until Saturday, May 7 in Austin, Texas. And as always, this is an opportunity for convergence of civic and business and government and nonprofit leaders from here and from the major metro host city. And we got a chance to learn about issues that are relevant to metro Atlanta and to collaborate on opportunities and challenges that are facing us here at home. So this time around, we looked at Austin in terms of its explosive population growth over the past few decades, the way they celebrate their own unique culture and promote and export it through music and film, and their intentional investment in technology and the entrepreneurial spirit. So that all seemed very similar to what our own region was, was looking forward to. And of course, they're struggling with workforce shortages, income disparity, and housing affordability. In terms of solutions, the group really was talking about economic development, social equity, investment in strategic housing and land use policy, workforce development, and transit expansion, including a $7 billion plan to expand mass transit in the region. They call it Transit Connect and its funding mechanisms and transit support coalition building. So, very eye-opening, very informative time spent there. It was instructional about how we can continue to work together as a regional alliance in solving the pressing issues that face our local communities. And similarly themed, yesterday, I just wanted to point out that we had the I-255 top end, high-capacity transit signing ceremony along with the ARC and, and other civic and government leaders. So, I'll finish my, my report with that. I will then, if you'll indulge me Chair, talk about some upcoming events and meetings of significance. Starting with tomorrow, we have a special call board meeting tomorrow on the budget and service, so we'll be unpacking the capital and operating budgets and also giving an update on the bus network redesign. We also have the Campbellton Road Corridor Transit Project Open House, so that'll be held at the local community center known as Junction 2800 on Saturday, May 21, from 11:00 AM until 4:00 PM. We also have the MARTA Board of Directors Statler Site Visit, which is happening during the Transit Board Members Conference. That's in Salt Lake City on Tuesday, October 2, which is actually the second opportunity for board members to, to go and see the VR mock-up and experience and the site visit at Statler, the first opportunity being on June 1 in Salt Lake City. The balance of, of items in terms of what's coming up are, are listed on your agenda, but I will take special mention and talk about two things that you just got a, a paper copy of some examples, hard copies. And they're really, you know, just paper reminders of, of our impressive Art Bound Spring Series. And, and invite, an invitation to the grand opening of Marshawn, which is a new development at King Memorial. So, just wanted to put those in hands and make sure everyone's well aware of the, the many efforts that MARTA and Art Bound are undertaking to, to keep our, our profile alive and well. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. At this time, may I have a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of real estate and litigation? Second?
Second.
Thank you. Let us vote by hand. So move, at this time, we'll move into executive session.
It is 1:30 PM. And at this time, I would like to call to order the May 12th, 2022 Board of Directors Meeting of the MARTA Board of Directors. And you do not have to sign in. Has all been done for you. Mr. Andrews, do we have any public comments to report via email or voicemail?
Yes, ma'am. We have four. The first one, we received from Brian Sumlin on May 5th. He is thanking MARTA for continuing to work with the community in regards to delivering transportation priorities. And he encourages MARTA to apply for all types of funding, whether it's for BRT or LRT, as we have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to preserve funding. The remainder of his email will be submitted into the minutes, verbatim. The second one is from Brendan Newsom, also received on May 5th, 2022. The email is to complain about MARTA mobility, saying the service is unacceptable and inefficient, that it's double-booked, and it's a quiet and extensive email about the problem she's had. Those will also be entered into the minutes. The third one is from Richard McLendon, received May 10. He is voicing support for BRT. And the fourth one is from Ed Williams. He is first mentioning that he thinks that contract items should have dollar amounts before they're voted on. He's also acknowledging that one of his lawsuits was dismissed by the Georgia Court of Appeals, and that he has some questions about the MARTA REACH program and why there was no public hearing before adopting that program. All of these will be submitted verbatim into the meeting minutes for your approval and review.
Thank you. We do have a public comment that's being written at this time, so for just a minute. I'd like to also state that I personally received a text from Ms. Sherri Williams, who left her phone at Georgia Stand Up, and she, of course, is our friendly community activist assigned to transportation by Georgia Stand Up, so she may also come in in a moment. But let me read the statement regarding public comments prior to your comments, sir, and then I'll receive your sheet so that I can introduce you. "The public will not be allowed to yield or donate time to other speakers. The public comment portion of the meeting will not exceed 45 minutes. In the event the 45-minute time limit is reached prior to public comments being completed, public comments will be suspended, and the board meeting will commence. Public comments will resume at the end of the board meeting." So I do believe we have a patron who's preparing the public comments, and as soon as we receive the green sheet, we will announce whom he is and whom he's representing here today. Thank you. Mr. McQuary?
Correct.
Thank you. Go ahead. You have two minutes, sir.
All right. Thank you. My name is Corey McQuary, and I'm representing the City of Atlanta NPU, Neighborhood Planning Unit Q, and we're taking a survey as to which system we'd rather support. And we have, I think the membership voted that we were supporting light rail transit over bus rapid transit, and we think both systems are good, but we just think the light rail transit would attract more people to the area and help vitalize the area more so than bus rail transit. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. McQuary. No other public comments at this time? May I have approval of the minutes of the April 14, 2022 Board of Directors Minutes? Thank you. May I have a second? The approval of the April 14, 2022 MARTA Board of Directors Meeting Minutes has passed. Thank you. At this time, I will yield to committee reports. Planning and capital programs, Mr. Pond?
Madam Chair, the Planning and Capital Programs Committee met on Thursday, April 28, 2022, and approved the following resolutions. A. Resolution authorizing the execution of a permanent non-exclusive easement agreement with Georgia Power Company for right-of-way needs on MARTA Parcels C-7116E on Abernathy Road for the I-285-400 Collector Lane project. B. Resolution authorizing the execution of a lease agreement with owners 50 Upper Alabama Street, Atlanta, Georgia, aka Underground for the MARTA Police Department relocation during the Five Points Station Transformation Project. I request approval of these resolutions.
Don't move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Let us vote. Thank you, Mr. Pond. The resolutions have passed.
The committee received the following briefing, briefing for the procurement of acoustics and vibration consulting services. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Pond.
May I register an issue with our new electronic voting system? Which is that when I vote to second, it almost recorded me as having voted against that item.
Which it just did to me, so I apologize. I voted second, and it shows up against.
I do see it.
I'm really for.
Because it's the same, it's the same physical space on the screen.
So let us refer that to our technicians.
And if you could just change mine to four, please. I'm not against that.
It does, it does, it has changed their note against at this time. Thank you, Mayor Floyd, for, we used to refer to that as user error back at AT&amp;T, so. May I have the Operations and Safety Committee, Mr. Worthy?
Madam Chair, the Operations and Safety Committee met on Thursday, April 28, 2022, and approved the following resolutions. A. Procurement of control systems upgrade of the NSH USA Corporation's Standray Wheel Truing Machines, RFP P P P 49916. B. Resolution authorizing a modification in contractual authorization for bus lifts remanufacturing, B 47090. C. Resolution authorizing a modification in contractual authorization for eligibility assessment services for MARTA Mobility, RFP P 46866. D. Resolution authorizing a modification in contractual authorization for CURE 800 Model 40 maintenance support, RFP P 47416. E. Resolution authorizing a modification in contractual authorization for professional services for Department of Safety in support of the State Safety Oversight Program, LOA L 48790. And F. Resolution authorizing an award of a contract for new railcar support services request for price proposal, RFP P P 50153. It was a long meeting, Madam Chair, as you can tell, and I respectfully request approval of these resolutions.
Madam Chair, I didn't hear all that.
He was talking quite fast, so, you know, except though he needed to get that done. Do I, do I have a, thank you. We have a second.
The committee, the committee received the following briefing.
Miss, we haven't announced the vote yet. See? Let us vote. The requests for the resolutions have passed. Mr. Worthy?
The committee received the following briefings, the safety performance KPIs. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Mr. Fryerson, the Business Management Committee.
Madam Chair, the Business Management Committee met on Thursday, April 28, 2022, and approved the following resolutions. A. A resolution authorizing an award of a contract for mobile broadband data plan service and machine-to-machine data plan service utilizing the State of Georgia contract, RFP P P 50155. Item B. A resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the procurement of hardware and software support for Hewlett-Packard service, utilizing the General Services Administration, GSA, contract, RFP P P 50134. Item C. Resolution authorizing a modification and a contractual authorization for the authority-wide wireless communication devices and services, RFP P P 43091. Item D. A resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the purchase of devices and services for wireless unlimited services utilizing the State of Georgia contract number, RFP P P 50152. And item E. A resolution authorizing the award of a contract for financial capacity and scenario planning services, RFP P P 50161. I request an approval of these resolutions.
Move.
Mr. Fryerson, you've got to ask Mr. Worthy for lessons on how to read more quickly. Let us vote. The resolutions have passed.
Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fryerson. Are there any other matters to come before the board? I do believe, Mr. Andrews?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to update us?
I have two matters. The first is to provide an update on the ongoing GM/CEO search as to notify the board that consistent with the approval that was given to us at the last meeting, we have executed a professional services agreement with K&amp;A. Greg Moser, who is the principal there, will be running the search. He will be reaching out in the near future to all of you to get input as to what you will be looking for in the next GM. From there, we're hoping at the June board meeting, we'll be able to approve the scope or what we will be looking for so he can advertise for that position. And then hopefully by mid-August, we'll have a list of names to start the interview process with, with a goal to have a final selection in October.
Thank you for the update. Mr. Andrews?
Yeah, the second matter is I would request a motion to authorize the Law Department to submit an offer of settlement in, oops, I'm sorry, I just lost it, in the Morgan v. MARTA matter, in the amount of $750,000.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
I'll second.
It has been moved in second. Let us vote. The motion has passed.
Thank you.
Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none, we do have allotted on the agenda the opportunity to finish public comments if needed, and I do believe we've been joined by Ms. Williams, who had to rush back to pick up that phone she left. And so, Ms. Williams, we will allot you this time for your two minutes of public comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sherri Williams, Georgia Stand Up Transit Equity Initiatives. I am racing here from, Georgia Stand Up had their ribbon-cutting ceremony today that was attended by the mayor and a lot of our partners. And the reason why I'm here today is to let you know that the Hamilton Corridor Committee that is composed of six NPUs in the Hamilton Corridor, we are moving along into answering the $10 million question, what does the community want? Now that we are making sure that they do understand more clearly the difference between LRT, BRT, and the consequences of either, I think we are in a much better place than we were at the beginning of the year. That said, the Adams Park Library that I think I mentioned last month is a resource center for the community where anyone that wants to know about this project, they can go and get a packet, and this packet is made up of information from the MARTA website, because keeping in mind, a lot of people on the corridor do not have access to the internet. So this is information along with Q&amp;As from your website so that they can be able to really figure out what's going on. And we look forward to the open house on May 21. That's going to be at 2800 Hamilton Road, and we hope that we will continue to have open dialogue with the staff and the contractors so that we can remain the number-one project on the more MARTA list. This is complicated, but working together, we can make some things happen. So thank you very much. And when you, when you do stuff right, we're there with you, and when you kind of
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Not right, we're gonna be okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
And make sure you.
Your timer wasn't on, so I just guesstimated there, so. Thank you so much. Please, the MARTA Board of Directors Meeting of May 12 is now adjourned.